It is 5:00 and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. And may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Councilmember McEckren?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
And at this time, we have public comments. And I do have one card. I will call Mr. Chester, Robert Richardson. And you have three minutes, sir.
Mayor and Council. I'm here today concerning my neighborhood. As you know, Saturday was Valentine's Day for many folk. In my neighborhood, we had such disturbance until late over in the evening because of the investors renting out without vetting the people that they allow in the homes that they rent. We get a lot of gang members, a lot of trafficking, and just after our wild parties continuously. In my neighborhood, there are a lot of old people that moved in. They bought their homes. They've been there 20, 24 years. The investors bought in that area as well. And they're allowing, or they're moving in people that they don't vet them, or they wanted this to receive salary or a monthly payment. And they don't check on the property, they don't check on the folk that they're allowed to come in. Now, this is not happening to my neighborhood. We get reports from the churches that it's happening in many neighborhoods. Because a lot of folk lost their homes. This Saturday night, there's at least three homes in there that we know that there's a lot of activity, a lot of trafficking. And most fightings and fussings and arguments late over into the night. We got a lot of folk that work in my neighborhood and a lot of retired people. And this disturbance, this Saturday night, and it was this place that was having a party, and they were asking people to pay to come to a party. When the disturbance began, they didn't want the people there. So they wanted their money back. So because of all of this, they had gang members there, and they began to shoot. And it's just a blessing of God, nobody got shot or got killed. But it put my neighborhood in an uproar. And by me living in the neighborhood, I've been there ever since they built the complex. And by me being a pastor, they began to ask me would I come before this council and find out what kind of information can we get, what kind of help can we get in starting a community watch program? Because a lot of them wants to move out by this last disturbance. They wants to move. They don't want to live in the neighborhood.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
And I told them, yes, I will come before the council. I will get all the information, gather all the information, and we will begin to mobilize my neighborhood and see what we can stop and get done in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will get someone to speak to you. We have your name and your telephone number here, so someone will be contacting you. Thank you. Now can we have the Declaration of Closed Session items by City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have five closed session items this evening. Items A and D are related. They are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. Litigation is the SEC versus the City of Victorville, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. The case number is set forth on the agenda. Items B and C are real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.8. With respect to Item E, the negotiating parties are Mr. Metzler on behalf of the Airport Authority and Comab LLC. The parcel numbers are set forth on the agenda. With respect to Item C, also real property negotiations, negotiating parties are again Mr. Metzler and Brian Parno of Sterling Development. And again, those parcel numbers are set forth on the agenda. The last item is also existing litigation. That is pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2. And this is the litigation with the names of the parties set forth on the agenda. It's Lamar and other parties. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report that at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately at the commencement of the 6:00 regular session.
Thank you. We now recess to our closed session, and we will convene at 6:00 PM.
As Mr. Robertson indicated, from the truck driving by as opposed to a wand or other methods of picking that up, and it's also expandable into an integrated system whereby in the future, there will be communication to various collectors such that it would be basically real time with no meter readers. It would all just be through radio links. It would be communicated to City Hall eventually, and very efficient billing system thereby.
Thank you.
Have a question. We, how many meters have been installed that can be read this way? Or?
Under this contract?
Well, it's not this contract, but we proved before putting in these kind of meters, it could be read.
You know, I don't know how many of the old meters that were put in, quite honestly.
Ones that we put in that would be automatically read, are they going to be replaced, or is this to replace meters that are read by an individual?
The program was never completed under the old radio meters. So what this is doing is this is going into, starting off with the remote areas and putting in meters where there was no radios before. And ultimately, the ones that were originally put in with the meters will be replaced.
And what is the proposed cost to replace all the meters?
I think there's some, there's well over 30,000 meters out there. And at $200 per, I think that's 6 million.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember McEckren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have Item D3, Mortgage Assistance Program Case Number 15-01-01 Reed. That the City Council approved Mortgage Assistance Program Case Number 15-01-01 Reed in an amount now to exceed $29,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckren, second by Councilmember Negretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion carries with Mayor Protem Cox opposing.
Item D4, Implementation of Salary and Possession Changes. I believe we have some cards.
Mayor and Mayor, members of the council, just a brief history on this. About two years ago, we hired a consultant to review all the salaries and benefits of all of our employees. It was supposed to be a relatively quick process, and it was not. As we are, here we are, two years later, still talking about it. This has come to the council, it came to the council in May of last year with one piece still remaining to be done. That was the appeals process. And the council directed myself and the Personnel Officer, Human Resources Officer, to complete the appeal process before bringing it back. So one of the requests from the council at that time was to bring in a third party. And we did that because it was a two-day process. We brought in two different people rather than tying up one person's time for a full, two full days. Ultimately, that process was completed, and it took a little bit longer than expected just because that process also resulted in other changes to positions that were tied to the positions that were appealed. So ultimately, in the end, I don't want to beat this thing to death, but I've been involved in several of these studies as an employee and as a manager. And I don't agree with everything in the study. I don't think anyone agrees with everything in the study necessarily, but this was by far the most comprehensive and fair that I've seen. By fair, I mean the employees had an opportunity to give input at the front end of the process, in the middle of the process, through an interview, and then at the end of the process, once draft decisions were known, they were given an opportunity to appeal those decisions. So overall, I'm recommending approval as it sits before you tonight on this item. Most of the other items that come after this, D5 through 7, are separate, although some of them were studied as part of the Class and Comp Study. This would be just the salary and classification portion of that study, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you. So what we're voting on right at this time is to approve the July 1st, 2015 Implement of the Salary and Possession Changes as recommended by consultants, as well as changes incorporated during the appeal process?
Yes, that's correct. And I did, just so you know, I did meet with all the employees, although I don't know if all of them attended. I had three meetings, one out at the City Yard, and then two right here in order to explain what was coming back to the council. I did indicate to the employees at that point in time that they're free to talk to the council either verbally or in writing. Some of them indicated a reluctance to speak and instead decided to write a letter to the council. I think that's what's included in your packet tonight. My only request of them was that they be respectful and be honest.
Mayor, just a question. Doug, you had indicated that this is kind of unique and separate from D5 through D7, or even D5 through D9. But are these not all budget items with respect to the next fiscal year?
They are. As we go into budget season, we're hoping to have all of these issues settled so that we only have one budget to process. Last year, we actually had three budgets running, and anytime there was a change made, it would have to be made to three different budgets. This would essentially set the ground rules as we move forward with budgeting as to, you know, what assumptions we're going to make as of July 1st.
The only reason I bring that up is because the overwhelming majority of these items affect all employees of the city. So from my perspective, and it being a part of the overall budget, I mean, in reality, it's as if we're adopting a budget with respect to the employees of the city.
You would be adopting essentially the schedule of compensation rates, yes. But that's something that gets adopted on an annual basis as it is. And we need to know those things in order to develop the budget. In order to come back for budget deliberations in April and May, we need to have some baseline assumptions. And that's what you would be doing, is setting those baseline assumptions tonight, or at least giving us direction on each of these items.
Okay, yeah. My only point in that matter is that a lot of these things all go together.
Yes.
So from that standpoint, I think, you know, they're all separated on the agenda, but they're all part of the budget when we come down to it.
That's correct.
So as a council, I think we can act on them collectively. There might be a few that we need to carve out, but I think you've got a lot of city employees and staff here that are going to speak to every single one of these, not just necessarily a particular item. And so the council ought to take that into consideration as we adopt all of them, not just one of them.
Yeah, some of the direction that we got in, at the May meeting, was that the compensate, that the study as a whole, looking at all of the positions as well as all of the benefits, as well as the vacation time, that it was simply too much as a single item. So the request was to bring it back separately. Because of the reasons you stated, I thought it'd be best, even though they're separate, that they come back on the same agenda. Because I suspect there may be some give and take with all of these items. The council certainly, unless the attorney tells, says otherwise, certainly has it in their purview to discuss multiple items at the same time as if you wanted to look at a give and take, which I've heard from at least one council member over the last week.
I think they have to be handled individually.
I agree.
I like the way the presentation is.
Okay.
No, that's all that I've got.
Okay, I have some cards, and these are pertaining to D4, which is the, to approve the implementation of the Salary and Possession Changes. The first card that I have is Hector Guzman. And following him will be Gregory S. Eldridge. So Hector, oh, there he is. And you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Garcia, council members. My name is Hector. I'm a customer service representative, and I'm going to be here speaking on behalf of all of the customer service representatives. I'm hoping to provide additional information and understanding as to the job duties and the increase in our workload that has taken place. As of 2006, as cashiers, our primary responsibility was to process cash and checks only for the cities, for all of the cities' departments. We opened animal licenses and BBTA bus passes. We also, at the end of the day, we would process, we would reconcile our cash and checks, and then make our bank deposit at the end of the day. Sanitation and mail and any starts and stops of services were processed by the Solid Waste Department at that time. When the two water districts merged with the city, we had all of the customer service representatives from Water and the cashiers cross-trained to better provide a, the best possible customer service that we could provide to our citizens. Some of our duties include now not only cash and checks, but as well as electronic payments, electronic checks, web payments, and credit cards. With the increase of these different types of payments, we now have to have a variety of knowledge on different software systems. So we have to do that, as well as an additional cash letter report at the end of the day. We also process utility starts and stops and adjustments to accounts that do require research into the utility accounts and Water Code law. The additional scope of work has been a huge increase in responsibility and workload to all of the customer service representatives. We're the first line of staff that customers see when they come into the city. We provide direction, information, and assistance in all areas of the city. We feel we are the face of the city and sincerely appreciate your consideration in adjusting our range from a 16 to a 20. Thank you.
Sorry, would you repeat the last few words I didn't hear? From what to what?
From a 16 to a 20.
16 to a 20?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
12%? Is that 12%? 16 to 20, is that 12%?
No, it would be 10% over time. The way the implementation is recommended is that at the least possible cost. Each step is essentially 2.5%. So employees at a certain salary, if their new salary range includes their current salary, they would see no increase, but on the back end of their tenure in that position, they would have additional steps to grow into.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. General, Mr. City Manager. My name is Greg Eldrich. I started with the City of Victorville in 1989. June 17th was the first time I addressed this council from this podium, and tonight is the second time. As I explained in the June meeting, I have been through the economic upswings as well as the downturns of the past 25 years. I'm here tonight to request that the Classification and Compensation Study not be implemented. The Classification and Compensation Study is a difficult thing to be able to complete, and the intent of the council, I believe, back in February of 2013, was to have a fair evaluation of the positions and the compensation of the city staff performed by a consultant, Pacific Sector, Public Sector Personnel Consulting. But that is not what ended up happening. The study was started by the consultant and then was passed over to the city staff to complete. It appears that the Class and Compensation Study was a moving target. What was originally proposed in a memo from the city manager dated June 23rd, 2014, and I'll read a direct quote, "Prior to the study, several employees expressed concerns about the past two studies that have been done by Human Resources under different leadership. Neither were comprehensive, studying all the job titles. One, the employees believed rewarded only employees who were in departments favored by the city manager and Human Resources Director at the time. The second, awarded pay increases in a new 401A plan benefit to management employees only. There was a lack of trust of Human Resources doing another study. I committed to the employees that to satisfy those skeptical of HR and to prevent HR from bearing the brunt of any potential negative outcomes, Human Resources may be involved in coordination only, but not in comparison or decision-making. I must have misunderstood the intent of the memo, because one of the three individuals that made the decision for the appeals was our Human Resources Officer. I believe that the Classification and Compensation Study continues to be flawed. The amount of vacation accrual stated in the original study was admittedly inaccurate. However, the information that's being presented on this proposal does not include the additional information that was presented to the city manager previously. The methodology of the Class and Compensation Study continues to be flawed. The original study did not address a comparison of all the positions of the city with other agencies. My position was one of those that was never compared. The basis for the appeal, however, was assigned, was based on the assigned pay range..."
You have 12 seconds.
I'm sorry? 12 seconds, okay. "...the assigned pay range is inappropriate in relation to other positions within the city. There was never an opportunity to have my position compared with anyone outside the city as other positions were." One of the other situations that changed, and I'm thankful that the board, the council's looking at, the hours of service. Having a 36-hour work week makes an impact of many of us...
That's three minutes.
...that are working for retirement. I have much, much more. Unfortunately, my time was not adequate. Possibly I could have other members give their time to me later? Would that be appropriate?
Linda St. Louis is next, and then I have Jim or James Graham.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm speaking to you as an employee of the City of Victorville, as well as a citizen of Victorville. I've worked for the city and lived in the city for the last 30 years. On behalf of the salary study, as I stated before, I still think the study is flawed and should not have been done in-house. I'm hoping that you'll look at the long-term costs that are involved if you vote to accept the Class and Comp Salary Study proposed to you. Where will the money to pay for the salary increases come from? What youth programs or engineering, public works, water projects will have to be cut to, for them, to pay for them? We were just starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. If this is passed, it is going to hit the general fund as well as city projects and programs. We haven't even started next year's budget yet. That will not go to council until June 16th, so we really don't know how we stand budget-wise. Also, with the recent loss of court workers and the additional events festivals planned that the city's proposing to host, we're already struggling to fund the staff to handle the additional work. At what cost will it be, or at what cost will it be to the citizens of Victorville? I have a little, something on the vacation, I don't know if you want me to come back up on when that's up, or say it now?
I'll call you up...
Okay.
...when we get to that point.
And so unfortunately, half of the coworkers here aren't going to be happy with me getting up here, especially the ones that signed the petitions and raises. I agree with a portion of it, but on the whole, I don't think it's justified. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Graham?
Thank you for taking time to speak with me tonight. Actually, there's just a couple things, to be honest with you. I've tried as much as I possibly can to try to understand what this comprehensive study is, and I've tried to follow chain of command. And one thing in particular that I was concerned about is that I've heard, I've heard, no, that the, I'm a water line locator for the City of Victorville. And I received a letter, and basically, I didn't quite completely understand it, and when I asked HR about it, they basically said that, no, you wouldn't be getting any increase back or anything like that. And then I brought it their attention about this comprehensive study that was given to me some months back about a possible $2 increase. And, but that was never addressed back to me whether, yes, there's going to be a $2 increase, or no, there's not, after, after this was given back to them. So I'm still kind of at a loss if, if there's any study in there indicating if I'm going to get a cost adjustment or not. And another thing I would like to mention, too, is that I know there's been talk about things are getting better in our community. You know, we have Macy's, we have Ashley's Furniture and stuff like that. And you know, a lot of this is kind of like in a monopoly effect, that if people aren't given enough money, and really, I think a lot of us are just asking for their money back that was taken, because we took such a huge cut back in '09. And when people have to cut and not spend money, that means that's money that's not going to be spent in our own backyard, in our community. But ultimately, my question, I would like someone to please tell me where, where is it that I am at with my position? Are they talking about an increase of a $2 difference in pay or not? That, that has never been answered.
You have 30 seconds.
And hopefully, they'll leave the vacation where it's at. I, I don't understand what that's all about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, I have Liz Becerra, and after her, I have Dana Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, City Council members and City Manager. When this comp started, we as employees were given the first right to say what we did for a living, what we did here. They gave us paperwork, they asked us, and we were given it back to them to explain. Not everybody's happy with it. We're never all happy with everything. But those jobs that were reclassified and changed were, were done so correctly. Those of us who did not receive a change were also allowed to talk with the city manager and the Personal Officer. We're all not going to be happy about it, but it was done fairly, and it was done with our input. We were, for the first time, allowed, I've been here for 28 years, we were allowed to give our input from the beginning. I do ask that you start with what Mayor Protem said, let's elevate the city. Start with jobs, jobs, jobs. Well, here's your chance. Well, here's your chance now. The jobs start here with us. The raises start with us. We're not talking to bury your guys' budget. We all know we have a budget to run off of. They are looking at it in the long term. We did lose a lot, but we can get back some of it. Do not punish the whole entire employees for the few that did not get a raise. Yes, I'm one of them. Okay? Do more with less. When do we stop saying that? Okay? Let's give the fairness to the rest of the employees. Some of the other things we're looking at, one at a time. I do understand Mr. McCacken wants to pass all this together, but some of the stuff looks at needs to be talked about separately. I thank you again for looking at this. Again, like Mr. Cox said, let's elevate the city, jobs, jobs, jobs. Let's go back to being the key city of the high desert, Mr. Cox. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and Members of the City Council. My name's Dana Armstrong. I work in the Community Services Department. I will have a few comments about some of the other items, so I'll keep this very short. Regarding the salary study, I have, I read through it, and I've thought about it, and it's, as Doug indicated, it's not perfect, but when, when I, when I came down to it, my feeling about it was that it has many positive things in it. The positive things outweigh some of the, some of the issues, and to me, the most important thing in it is that it addresses the, the salary for the employees at some of the lowest salary ranges currently, specifically the customer service reps, our maintenance workers, and our animal control officers. These folks really need to be brought up, and I think it's very important, very, very important, and I, I do support it. It's not perfect, Doug mentioned during our employee meeting. This process is hopefully coming to its conclusion, but that doesn't mean that if something isn't completely right, we can't continue to address it moving forward in future budget years, et cetera, as we always have on an individual basis. But I do support the salary study, and, and I hope that you will as well. Thank you.
Those were all the cards that I have.
Madam Mayor, if I could address two issues that were brought up. One had to do with human resources involvement. It is true that early on, in fact, throughout the whole process, I had concerns about having human resources involved, largely because of historical trust issues with that department and division now. And that was something that the council prescribed for us, if you will, at the meeting in May, was to get human resources more involved. So that's what we did. I think ultimately, when you do a study like this, and HR is, is that involved, unfortunately, sometimes they can bear the brunt of any of the negative reactions. And I was trying to avoid that, but the council direction was very clear that they wanted, you wanted HR involvement. That's why we involved them at, at the last piece of the, of the meetings. Regarding any individual employees who spoke regarding their own positions, we're prohibited from discussing that, as I understand it, Mr. Attorney, on an individual basis without providing legal notice to them, and I don't want to violate that, but as I've said all along in the process, if there's anyone who still has any questions about their individual positions, I'm perfectly happy to meet with them, with the HR officer as well, to get through that and at least have them understand. Don't know if they will agree with everything that's said, but I'd at least like them to understand how we came to the decisions that we did, and if there's still anything that's unclear, certainly get that cleared up.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the council?
I have some comments, if I may. Back in 2009, we had kind of a dire financial situation, and it was necessary to lay off, reorganize, and lay off a large number of individuals. The end result was that the duties and responsibilities to the citizens continued, and therefore, employees had to take on other employees' jobs, which meant in some instances, they would take on a job that they weren't hired for, but we asked all the employees to double up and do other people's jobs. This was right after I cut 6.5% from all the wages. Then I, on top of that, we, we did away with the cost of living for a three-year period. That was absolutely necessary. As much as that hurt the employees and the city's image and everything else, it was absolutely necessary. What I told the employees at that time, and I met with every single employee that was laid off and reclassified, was that when the economy got better, and we began to add employees again, that people would be hopefully put back in the job that they were qualified for or had, because as we hired new individuals, there would be a job classification for each individual, and they would no longer be required to do someone else's work without additional salary income. I didn't stay during that whole transition, and the recovery took longer than it should. Still not out of the woods, but we've come a long way. I had questions, I wanted a, I wanted a, the city council to meet an executive session because I had some questions, I had a lot of questions. Was there consideration to put employees back in, in the job that they were doing? Or as a result of four years of experience, were they qualified to receive the raise without considering a promotion, which I think is a legal question? And in many instances, a lot of employees continued to do the same job, some of the employees took on the same job. The employees that are being advanced, I don't want to say a promotion, because a promotion requires recruitment, but they're being advanced or reclassified, were they employees that's continuing to do the same job, or were they employees that took on other jobs? As they laid individuals off, the job had to go on. We didn't get a chance to meet an executive session and go over these items, and so I'm, I, I don't have any idea what occurred. We have to put our trust and faith someplace, because we cannot, as a council, get involved in writing the job descriptions, although we have to approve them. And we don't talk to the individual employees, because each has a supervisor, a department that they work for, and we kind of hold the city manager responsible for ensuring that that's done and done fairly, and that's where we put our trust and faith. My goal, and what I had promised the employees, and if I haven't met those promises, I will apologize right now, is that we hadn't granted the cost of living, and that would probably be the first thing I would want to do, because that, all employees, all employees, essentially received a reduction in pay when they didn't get the cost of living. And to my way of thinking, the first thing that the city council should face was an increase in the cost of living, or at least giving that cost of living back. Even last year, when we, I made the motion to grant the cost of living and informed the cost of living is 1%, was totally confused that App Valley, I think, was 1.5% cost of living. Hisbury was close to 5, and obviously, there was something wrong, and so I asked that two things occur. We find out what those cities compared, what they use as the cost of living, because we traditionally have, that use March through March. If, every city will use the same month every year, over a five-year period, it's the same, even though each year may be different. It'll average out. So I had requested that, we didn't get it. I was hoping we would get it, we're not going to apparently. I was hoping that we would go back and address the cost of living, because in addition to receiving a salary reduction, you didn't get the cost of living, I was hoping that we would address that. We are, but in a different way. We also note that with the health care and all the changes that have occurred, it's been my feeling that our health care contracts need to be revised. I think that's the number-one obligation that we have. We don't have an obligation to give everybody 30 days a year vacation, but we certainly have an obligation to make sure that their health and dental and so on is taken care of, and the policy has always been that we provide enough that in a good contract, most of the family are covered under those benefits. Part of the executive session that we didn't have was to negotiate our health benefits, to compare those. Because I was negative, the consultant called me, and one of the things that I'd asked for was, we do a total compensation study, and that skews the results. I don't know if all consultants do a total compensation or not, but if you have, it's a given that if you have a young employee group, they want salary, and if you have an older employee group, they want benefits. It's a given. And if you add them all together and say the average is, you don't know what you're averaging, because I went to another city, Victorville had a better health coverage policy, that we paid almost 150 a month less than what the other city was paying, and yet, you just, the, the line was providing health care without the cost, or providing a number without knowing what you're getting, or providing dental without comparing it to what public employees would normally get. We also have the question of the indebtedness from the retirement. And I'm, I'm the first one to point out that I had felt that that needed to be addressed, probably as the number-one issue, and I am absolutely shocked. I don't think any city was willing to address it. The state legislature finally addressed it. Anytime the state or the federal government addresses something, watch out. And in Stockton, if you read the newspaper, where they have this horrible debt of unfunded liability, rather than address it, they decided to cut the health benefit by nearly 50%, which is just backward. But they have a larger, a large number of employees who are getting ready to retire, that's the last thing they wanted, so all the young employees are going to suffer on that one. I had these questions that I felt we could discuss with the council, discuss, do some further study. We apparently are not going to do that, and so we're going to address these one by one. And on this classification study, I looked at it, we're not allowed to look at the employees, I want to clarify that, but when we have five employees, or six employees, they all have the same title and the same salary, and out of the blue, you read where one is going to be advancing 6% or 9% and the others are not, I wonder why? I think it's logical to ask the question, why? If I'm told, well, that's what the study showed, that's fine, but if you ask the employee what they're doing, and then the consultant talks to the employee, and the employees are doing the same thing, how did somebody choose to advance one employee and not the rest? These were the questions I wanted to address, they haven't been answered, I don't know that they will be, and I'm still going to ask the council. I think we can address five, six, and seven, but, you know, whether we address them all at once or not, my opinion only, I still have too many questions on this to make any kind of a decision, but I'm prepared to make the decision on the ones following.
Have anything else? Make a motion?
Well, I, I'd like to make a few comments. You know, as a council, we hire a city manager to, to do a specific job, and if, if we're not satisfied with the city manager in doing that job, then as the council, we ought to look to replace the city manager. We task the city manager with going out and doing this, this salary and compensation and classification study, and as I've heard from a lot of the employees tonight, you know, it's not a perfect system, some people like it, some people don't. But I did hear more applause than I did hear boos. But one of the things that I think that, that's important is, and one of, it just, it, it boggles my mind, because if we are not going to allow our city manager to do his job, then why are, why do we have him employed? At the end of the day, he needs to be able to make these decisions, he needs to be able to, you know, manage the city, and from the perspective of, you know, the day-to-day operations, employees and all that, he needs to be able to make those decisions. Salary study is what the salary study is. I don't know that any one of us up here likes it. Mayor Pro Tem Cox talked about several of the other items to follow, and that was my point. I mean, why are we making a decision based upon a salary study when everything that follows it plays into the budgeting decisions that we make in the, the next fiscal year? I mean, nothing is mutually exclusive of the other. So you can't say, well, I want to do this, but I don't want to do that. I mean, it, it, it tends to get convoluted when you, when you start playing those games. So from my perspective, I think that what has occurred here, although not a perfect system, is somewhat of a move in the right direction. Can we improve upon it? I'm sure we can. Can we do things that are better? I'm sure that we can. I think that every recommendation that we see here tonight is an attempt to do that. Is it perfect? There's absolutely no way that it is, and there will never be anything that is perfect. But as Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Kennedy know, owning businesses, we make decisions, and we don't make them mutually exclusive of one another. Sometimes you make a decision that contemplates all aspects of what goes on in your day-to-day business. You don't sit here and go, okay, well, I'll do this with salary, but I won't do this with benefits, and by the way, I'll take away vacation, but I won't, I, I won't give you cost of living increases. These are things that, in our day-to-day operations, we don't make decisions mutually exclusive of each other. It is one decision, and it's made based upon whatever the reality of that situation is. So, and quite frankly, the clients of all of our firms do that every day as well. So I can't sit up here and suggest that it's okay for me to adopt one recommendation from my city manager, but deny another, because from my perspective, my city manager is who I've hired to do the job of running the city. And in this case, when it comes to employees, that means managing the employees. I realize that we have to approve this, but short of you unionizing, and I'm not suggesting that, but short of that, we've got to be up here making this decision, but at the same time, if he's making the recommendation that this is what ought to occur, then it is what it ought to occur. So from my perspective, I, I don't have a problem with any of the items here. I think I'm willing to adopt the recommendations of our city manager in their entirety.
Anyone else? Well, the way I see this, we have a foundation to start with. Just what I see, it's not perfect. Some of it is even confusing. But I see it as a foundation to be able to build up from it, and as time goes on, we can make corrections to whatever needs to be corrected. I'm sure that not all of it is correct at this time. Some things may have been overlooked, maybe positions, classifications, whatever they may be. If we start with a foundation, I think, I believe that this would be a starting point. I'm not completely sold on all of it, but as Councilmember McCacken just pointed out, it's, it all ties in together, so I don't see where I can do that either, you know, just pick and choose which one I can vote on. So my suggestion for, or my opinion, myself, my opinion, it's all one item, and it's a beginning, a foundation to start making some corrections here.
Madam Mayor, don't we also have a meeting coming up next week to talk about this? Specifically on the 24th? Can anyone be scheduled?
No, we actually, rather than having the second meeting, since this agenda was so light, we moved those items to, to this agenda, and that would preclude the nest, the need for another meeting unless there's some follow-up.
I'm sorry if you were not informed that.
Oh, no, that, that's fine, thank you. One more question, Madam Mayor. Just hearing this, just from, from taking a look at what we have in front of us. Just hearing this, just from taking a look at what we have in front of us, and I understand that there's been years of history on this, but I wasn't obviously here for that, but it seems like something like this might be better in a phased-in approach over time, as opposed to all at once. I mean, the impacts of each one of these is significant. But I mean, I would take a recommendation. So maybe D5, was it D4?
Current item.
Yeah, current item, right. D4. Is that something we could deal with tonight and then take a recommendation at a later council meeting on the other items?
Well, that would be up to the council.
I'm not sure I understood, we're dealing with D4, the salary compensation study, as it's been presented.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the item that's on the floor right now. I think what Councilmember Negretti, I want the words in your mouth there, was saying was that perhaps on the other items, rather than making a decision tonight, give direction to staff to head a certain direction and bring it back to the council, either in a week or perhaps during the budget, something like that. That could accomplish both handling the items individually, but also collectively as a package.
Forgive me, I'm just going to go back to my original position on this. I think as a council, when we have to deal with these issues, we've got to look at them in their entirety. We will look at the entire budget in its entirety over the next several months, but we're asked and tasked to look at specifically these items tonight that deal with the most of you that are in the audience. And from my perspective, I think this again moves us in the right direction. So I'm going to ask the council, and I'll make a motion to adopt items D4 through D8.
I just, we just cannot do that. Some of those items have options. We've got to look at the individual options. Ryan, I mean, I won't second the motion, I absolutely disagree with you. We need to deal with them one at a time. Whether we make a decision is another matter, but we need to talk about them. Just, no, absolutely not.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just for clarity's sake, items D4 and D5 were studied as part of the class and comp study. D6, 7, and 8 were items that were brought up at the May meeting. So they're separate. So D4 and 5 were part of the study, as I said. D5, 6, and 7 actually don't have a specific recommendation from myself or from any staff. They list a series of options, and I was going to talk about this once we got past D4 on D5. Part of that reason is because D5 became really a divisive issue, where my own personal opinions were mixed in with the recommendations from the study, and it just became problematic. So rather than making a recommendation, we've simply given you options to discuss as a result. So there wouldn't, for 5, 6, and 7, there is no recommendation that you could adopt as a whole. But certainly if you, as a council, indicate on those items which of the options you prefer, or some overall direction on those, we can certainly accomplish that within a short timeframe.
Madam Chair, members of the council, is it possible to, rather than act on number 5 right now, or 4, discuss 5, discuss 6, discuss 7, and then decide which ones you may want to approve or deny or continue?
For a procedural matter, you can certainly do that. You could consider open all four items at the same time and then just make individual motions on each of the items.
I think it all relates to employee benefits, but if you open them all at the same time, I think we're going to have a lot of confusion. I'd like to discuss them individually. That's my request, but it's up to the council.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Well, that doesn't require a motion, I don't believe, does it?
No.
Okay, so if we have, I don't, it appears at least the majority to not take an action until all of them have been discussed. Is that fair?
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, on item number D5, this issue is the vacation hours earned on an annual basis. I did my best to come up with as many options as I could think of, given all of the input that I had from staff. As I mentioned earlier, this became a divisive issue that I thought was counterproductive to employee morale, so rather than inserting myself into the discussion, I left it up to you all. So essentially, option number one is maintaining our current level of earned service on an annual basis. Keep in mind, the little numbers in parentheses are assuming at some point we go back to a 40-hour work week. These levels were reduced based on the furloughs, because if there's only 36 hours, you only need 36 hours to take a week off, so vacation hours were reduced as a result. So there's an assumption that if you go with option number one and eliminate the furlough, that it would be the number in the parentheses. Hopefully that didn't complicate it too much. Option number two was the median level per the study. The HR staff did take a look at some of the other agencies that had not responded to the consultant. Ultimately, the median level stayed the same at 160 hours. There's a little bit of backup documentation to go with that in the item. Option number three, as you recall, back in May, some of the employees talked about the fact that they received so many hours when they first started working here, 20-plus years ago. So we, I did a little bit of research because I didn't know when that had changed, and that had actually changed back in 1998 to what's the current level. So one option that I put forward was to go back to what it was back prior to 1998, which maxed out at 192 hours annually. Then getting creative, because there was talk about possibly grandfathering in, I came up with two grandfathering options. One essentially says that all the employees in the room, all current employees, stay at the current level. And all employees hired after July 1, if that's the implementation date, would go to the median level with a maximum of 160 hours. That's done at times in different types of negotiations. And then option five is similar in that it grandfathers existing employees where they are right now. So if they're earning, let's say, 167 hours, they would never rise above that. However, if they're earning 207 hours, they wouldn't drop. They simply freeze where they are now. If you're below any of those amounts, your maximum would then be 160 hours. So the purpose of the options wasn't to confuse anybody, it was just simply to throw ideas out there to get an overall direction from the city council to, as to which way you would like to head on this item.
I have a question. Doug, you said on option one, you have in parentheses 87 hours, 96 of a 40-hour work week. On option two, there's no parentheses. Is that based upon a 36-hour, I mean, a 36 or 40-hour work week? Same for three?
That would be based on a 36-hour work week, so I guess the first two options, the 87 and the 127, assuming the furloughs go away, I would recommend that we go back to the original level, which was the 96 and the 136.
So does the 160 hours represent four weeks, five weeks, what?
160 hours is four weeks, yeah.
Well, I'm going to put in my two cents here. I think four weeks should be the max. Believe anybody should have more than four weeks. Also believe that vacation is not a deferred compensation plan, it is not a retirement plan. Vacations are critically important to the organization, and they're important because people should take them. So I'm pretty adamant on this one. I think four weeks is the max, and anyone who's accumulated more than that, we should buy that, pay that out now, get everybody to that maximum. And option two is the only one that makes any sense to me at all.
Well, I agree. Option two is the only one that does make sense.
Anything else from anyone?
Mayor Garcia, just, you know, you do have some cards specifically on this item, too.
Doug, just to be clear, you don't have any recommendation on this one? Is that my understanding?
That's correct. At this point, I don't, no. It essentially was pitting me against the employees, and I don't want to be in that position. The study was implemented at the median level, the median level is option two, but I don't have any recommendation on this item.
Linda St. Louis, were you speaking on this particular item? And then after you, I have Liz.
For the vacation, in the study, Adelanto and Barstow were not included. So if you, Adelanto is 240 hours for 11 years plus. We're not talking accumulated, it's per year. Barstow is 208. So if you just took Adelanto, Apple Valley, Barstow, Hisperia, and Victorville, which are the cities closest, the median is 219 hours, not 160. And then if you chose to include San Bernardino at 200 hours and Lancaster at 160, the median is 207.86. So I'm just asking you to take that into consideration, too. The 160 hours would put us lower than everybody except Hisperia. But Hisperia, their per is higher, their benefits, everything else, so that figures into that. But every other city up here gets more vacation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have an opinion on this, and I know what you guys are saying, option two. If you take option two, you're hurting the employees that have been here 20-plus years. Already in the rules, personnel, and regulations today is a maximum amount you're allowed to have on the books. We've been given already direction by the city manager to start advising our employees who have 270-plus hours on the books to start taking vacation. So when I started here 28 years ago, and I was told this is how much vacation I would get after 20 years, they're going to take it from me, and it's almost going to be half. We're not using it as a retirement, we're not using it as a savings account. We're using it for the time that we have to take off. So there is already a rule in the books that tells you how much you can have on the book. So when you do retire, you don't retire with 800-plus hours in your pocket. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, there was a couple of speakers who wanted to speak on this item that submitted a card only for item number four. I don't know who all they were. It looks like Dana was one.
Yeah, my apologies, I did one card for all four items, so thank you for hearing me out. And one thing on the salary study, I just wanted to note, I don't benefit from that at all. My position doesn't get an increase, so I was non-biased on that. But on the vacation, I'll admit, I am biased. I hope you will keep the option to, option number one, to keep the current vacation accruals. Or if you don't want to do that, then option four, which is where we freeze, we have a grandfather clause for the current employees. Reducing vacation accruals won't save money, we're going to get paid for the same number of hours per year regardless. If the issue of cashing out accrued vacation is a concern, then yes, we do already have on the books a maximum accrual, and we need to get into the habit of actively encouraging and making sure that the employees don't go over that amount. But this proposal to go to 160 maximum hours, that would be less than when I started with the city back in 1995. At that time, it was 192 hours. So this is taking away, this is really taking away from the longtime employees. Anybody with 15 or more years here is going to potentially lose 47 or 87 hours of vacation. And yes, I admit, I hear what you're saying, Councilman Kennedy, it, four weeks is wonderful, but this is one of the things about Victorville that is great about Victorville, that the employees appreciate. We do not take this for granted. We appreciate having this level of vacation, and I urge you not to just go with the median and cut out and take away from those long-term employees. One other thing I'd like to point out, that if we do the median, if we go with the median of 160 hours, that would put the city of Victorville, our great city, and put our employees below the level of compensation for vacation, below Adelanto, below Apple Valley, and below Barstow. And I just question if that's where we want to be, below all of those other jurisdictions. Thank you. I know I'm disagreeing with you, and I appreciate you hearing me out on that.
Thank you.
I see a right opportunity to speak on multiple items, as I intended. You know, again, being a 25-year employee, when I started, we had what they called longevity pay. It was a benefit that was paid to those employees that had been with the city for a number of years. And when the city encountered the downturn in the economy, it became imperative that that was no longer a luxury that we could be able to afford. And the employees, the longtime employees who benefited the most, were willing to give that up, or we had no choice, we gave that up. But now where we have a situation where the employees have been here the longest, they've been here for a number of years, a benefit that we were enjoying is now looked at being cut. So at this point, we're being told, as the employees, that our years of service don't mean anything more. And so I, again, respectfully request, freeze it, or at least go back to when I started, back in 1998, back to those hours. Don't cut it below what I anticipated I was going to have whenever I got to the 20-year mark. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question before the next speaker. It wasn't my understanding that any current employees on vacation would get cut or lose anything. Is that correct?
They won't lose any hours that are currently on the books. That's not legal. Those are earned hours. Does that answer your question, Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Was the discussion then that, let's say that we bite this up and say, all new employees, which doesn't affect anyone here, all new employees would have a maximum of 160 hours, and the corresponding table that's in between. Would current employees remain on the same level that they are at until they retire? Or would they simply freeze everything they have and then start? How would they do, what if they have 192 hours on the books and we adopted 160? They don't lose it, but that forces them then to take four weeks of vacation?
No, it does not. Let me try to explain it. The hours that are on the books is a separate issue, one that we will address with the personnel rules when those come back to you, hopefully later this year. Just as a bit of a side note, some of the employees mentioned the policy that we have that caps the number of hours you can maintain on the books. To my knowledge, that's never been enforced. I've been here for, going on 13 years, and I've never seen anybody be forced to take vacation as a result of that policy. That's something that needs to change. We need to get better about that. Unfortunately, when we looked at that the last couple of years, the cost in doing that, and essentially paying out all of those hours, is not something the city can afford, and not something particularly attractive to the employees because of the tax rate they would be hit with on those hours. So to separate out the maximum number of hours on the book, this is not discussing that item at all. This is, this item is pertaining only to the number of hours accrued in a single year. So Mayor Pro Tim Cox, to answer the question, options four and five give you two different options depending on if you would like to grandfather the current employees. One option would be grandfathering them in at the current, the current structure for all of the different years of service, meaning that if they have, let's say, 17 years of service, when they get to 21-plus, they would then go up. So essentially, the current benefits that they enjoy would stay the same. Only new employees, who we don't, who are not hired yet, would go to that 160 or whatever number the council decides. The second option, option number five, means that if an employee is currently getting 167, 207, or 247 hours, they would freeze at that level and stay there for the rest of their career. If an employee is at, say, 87 or 127, they could grow, based on the schedule, up to a maximum of 160 hours. a maximum of 160 hours per year. So it's kind of two different grandfathering options, depending on which way the council wants to go.
So number five, implement option two, grandfather existing employees, covers option two, as it's described here, but protects all the employees that have that on the books so they don't lose it?
Yeah, option five, it would freeze them at their current levels, whatever that happens to be effective July 1st.
Okay.
Unless they weren't already at 160, obviously.
How's that different from four, Doug?
So what four would do is, let's say an employee, and let me take a look here so I get the numbers right, let's say an employee currently is between 16 and 20 years of service, they have 207 hours on an annual basis. Under option four, they would, when they hit 21 years of service, they would then go to 247 hours. Under option five, they would never get another increase in the number of hours annually. So it would freeze where they are now. They don't lose anything. The books are not in trouble regardless. So it just depends on if you want to grandfather in where they are exactly right now, or if you want to grandfather in the schedule that they're on right now.
And do you have a recommendation?
No, he's not going to make one.
Because I go back to the fact that you've got five options in front of this council, and I need a recommendation out of my city manager.
And I cannot give you a recommendation on this item.
I do. That's why we have him hired. That's all I'm asking.
Can't put him in that spot. You just can't. Put him in that spot, Ryan.
What do you do in your own business?
Do exactly what I think is best.
Exactly. So I'm asking, Doug, if this was your own business, what would you do?
But it's our business. This is our decision, not his.
I still want a recommendation. I think it's appropriate for staff to give a recommendation.
I've made it clear that my personal opinion is that four weeks is plenty of time off. But I would hate to see you do something that damages the employees that have been here for 20-plus years. I know that's not a 100% recommendation. It's a bit of a cop-out.
Sounds like number five.
Sounds like five.
I would say four or five. I would say four or five would maintain the morale better than two, obviously.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment. The reason why you see at the end of this agenda, city council stipend benefits, is because I, like many of the people here, want to ensure that being the key city of the high desert means something. And I know that other cities have diverse and disparate compensation packages even for city councils. For example, some cities get a car allowance, some don't, and we don't. And I understand what happened. I've been up here off and on since the '80s. I understand what happened. And what I wanted was recommendations on a consistent compensation strategy for all of us. But instead, we're doing it right now. And I'll just say right now, if I have to give my opinion on that, then I will. This should be about making the employees whole. It should be. So on the one hand, you have inconsistent compensation. You've got a compensation study that says X percent of the city employees are not paid correctly, and X percent, or Y, are paid correctly, or competitively. Then on the other hand, in 1998, we had what looks to me to be a competitive vacation breakout, and somehow we raised it to where we're at now, and now we're talking about walking it back to even lower than it was. So that is not a consistent strategy, and I would be, I'm a little frustrated right now, because what you've got is five variables here, and what we're trying to do is find something that works for the city, with the resources we have going forward, that makes sense. So I don't know how you can say, option two for vacation, and then, yes, let's bring back salaries for this, and let's increase COLA for that. What is our strategy? That's all it is.
Well, I have to say, one thing I am not willing to do is use Adelanto as a standard for financial management that we're going to be following. That one doesn't work well.
Or San Bernardino and Stockton.
What?
Or San Bernardino and Stockton.
But Apple Valley and Hesperia are okay.
Well, they're competitive cities in the valley.
And we haven't even addressed the largest, biggest issue in front of us, frankly, and that's the pension liability. E6. I mean, this, can we? Madam Mayor?
Yes, we can move on to the, let me see, there would be item.
What's presented to us as an option doesn't give us the information that we need to even make a decision. We have two very large gorillas standing in the room. One is probably a 2,000 or 3,000-pound gorilla, and one's about an 800-pound gorilla. The big one is the OPEB liability, Other Post-Employment Benefits, the promise we have made to pay your health insurance for the rest of your lives. That is an almost impossible calculation to do, and the people who do this for a living still can't tell us exactly what the number is. But right now, today, based on, and Gloria and I met with the auditors about a month ago and discussed this at some length, based on what they think, and what the actuaries sort of estimate, is that OPEB liability today is about $30 million. It's growing at the rate of about $2.5 to $3 million a year. We are paying about $300,000 a year towards that liability. That one is mind-boggling, and it's out there. But I don't even want to talk about that one now, because that's not on the agenda. The 800-pound gorilla is the unfunded pension liability. Our best estimate, from where we think we are now, or at least at the end of June of '14, is that that unfunded pension liability, what we have promised to pay employees in the future, when you retire, the unfunded piece is about $20 million, give or take a million or so. We are currently, the city is currently paying about $2.6 million, which is the employer's share. We're paying $1.4 million, which is the employee's share, for a total of about $4 million a year. That's what we are now paying. That liability is accruing at about $6 million a year. So we're losing ground to the tune of $2 million a year on that unfunded pension liability, paying everything that we're paying. Now, this is a promise we've made to our employees, and I think we, I see four choices. There may be more. I'm going to give you my four choices, and then we'll sort of, I'll shut up, I'll let others speak on this. One thing we can do is ignore it. We can just pull the cover over our head and say, I don't want to deal with this, I'll make too many people mad, I'm just going to kick it on down the road, and my kids or my grandkids will deal with it. Because I promise you, when the chicken comes home to roost, none of us sitting on this dais will even be alive. I mean, it's out there in the future, but it's pretty far out there. But somebody's going to have to deal with it. So one of our choices is just to ignore it. Do what other local governments do, what the federal government does on the federal debt? Just ignore it. Not worry about it. Second choice is, we can go back to the citizens of Victorville and say, you need to pay more. You're not paying enough. We can't raise sales tax, we can't raise property taxes, so we have to find it somewhere. We have to raise fees, whatever we charge them for water, sewer, whatever else, we're going to have to raise it and fine $2 million so we can get the citizens to pick up this shortfall. I won't do that. Others might. Third choice is, we can cut costs. We can just start looking for $2 million of savings. Sam, how many police would we have to cut to find $2 million in the, don't answer that. How many fire stations would we close? How many streets would we not pave that we're already not paving? Then we've got a fourth choice, and that is that the employees pay their share. Employees pay the 8% share that is required, that we are now paying, but is required under
Doug, I asked you some time ago if we have a plan where employees would begin paying their share, and as I recall, you have an answer for that. Maybe you didn't. Maybe I missed something.
Well, that's the purpose of the item, is to come up with a plan. In the past, or let me go back a little bit, the legislature passed an act, I don't remember the exact name of it, but it put in place PEPRA, which, I don't know what it stands for, but essentially, it changed the way benefits are calculated and the way employees pay for their share of the benefits. So effectively, any employees hired here after January 1st, 2013, are on a different plan from anyone hired prior to. Their benefit costs are less, their benefit amounts when they retire are less, and those employees, by law, pick up that full employee's share. It's a little bit smaller than 8%, I think it's 6.75% because of the difference in the calculation when they do retire. As far as a plan, management has not put together a specific plan for the employees to pick up the 8% employee's share. When that law was passed, all the cities were told, in different advisements, that the law required that within five years, that the employees pick up that 8% share if they weren't already paying it. That advice then somehow changed to employees picking up half of the, quote, "normal" costs. Some cities believed that to be, the employees pay the employee's share, and the employer pay the employer's share, which seems to make common sense, but common sense doesn't always come out of Sacramento. So some cities have totaled, and it appeared that it was all headed to this direction, totaled both the employer and the employee's share, cut it in half, and we're moving towards the employees paying half of that, which would be, in the case of Victorville, more like probably 10% or 11%. Hesperia is the only one that I'm aware of that the employees pay more than the 8%. They pick up 1% of the employer's share as well, as a negotiated item through their collective bargaining. I'm not aware of any other cities that have done that. And then, as these rules tend to, not really change, but they get clarified, the PERS board finally came out with a ruling, or maybe they read the law, I don't know which, and in fact, the law does not require the employees to pick up any share. It's more that they can, cities can require that, which they already could require it. So at that point, what was going to be a long-term plan for employees to pick up that share as required by law, suddenly was no longer required by law and became more of an option, which is why the agenda item is before you tonight, is to find out kind of a two-part question here. Does the council want the employees to pay that 8% share, or some portion of it, or would they prefer to continue to provide that level of benefit to the employees? The cost on an annual basis is roughly $1.6 million for that 8% share. So should the council opt to have the employees pick it up, the city, and really, it's more the other agencies, the Water District, the airport, and other things, would pick up a larger savings? But effectively, over all the agencies, there would be a savings of $1.6 million annually that would be shifted from the employer over to the employees.
You know, Jim, let me just add this thought, because it chews right onto what Doug's saying, and I think everybody needs to understand this. We are now paying 22% of compensation. Our $4 million represents about 22% of compensation. That's the employer and the employee's share. What we need is to pay 30% to stop the bleeding, not to retire the debt, but to stop it from growing. So we need another about $1.6 to $1.8 million a year. I would propose the city continue paying exactly what it's paying, and by the employees picking up their share, we've now achieved a stop point. We've stopped this thing from continuing to grow. People who are going to get this benefit are not sitting up here on this dais. They're the employees who are going to enjoy this benefit. That's it.
Sorry. I have two questions, Doug. Did I understand you to say that all employees that have gone to work with the city since January 1 of 2013 is paying the employee's share, PERS?
That's correct. That's what the PEPRA law says. Their share, I believe, is 6.75%.
So, but the current employees that have been here prior to January aren't paying any. In Hesperia, the employees are paying what share again of PERS?
So let's divide it up.
I think you said.
Let's divide it up between what's called classic employees and PEPRA employees. PEPRA employees being those hired after January 1st, 2013. I don't know what the formula is in Hesperia. I suspect it's similar to what our new employees are paying right now, which is 6.75%. In Hesperia, my understanding is that the employees pay the full employee's share of 8% plus 1% of the employer's share, so a total of 9%. As I said, that's the only city I'm aware of that the employees pay any portion of the employee, doesn't mean that it's the only, but it's the only one I'm aware of.
And so when we did the salary survey, Victorville employees, to do, to match salary to salary, you'd effectively add 8% to the employees of the city to compare them to Hesperia.
That's correct. That was all boiled down into the hourly rate that the consultant came up with.
They did that?
That was all part of the total compensation. Ultimately, that portion of the study was not implemented, it was not recommended, because the PERS issue is so up in the air. As the staff report indicates, about a quarter of the cities pay the full, or employees in cities pay the full share, a quarter pay nothing, and then half of them are really in transition from one to the other.
Madam Mayor, you also have some cards on this, I believe, saying people that wanted to speak on this item.
Yes, I do. I have one. Sheila Garland.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Sheila Garland, and as of this coming October, I will have been an employee for the City of Victorville for 28 years. With regard to the PERS and paying the 8%, I, and I'm sure much of my fellow employees, could not afford that. I took a huge hit on my household income five years ago when I was widowed. So I'm basically on my own. I've cut costs, I've downed to my mortgage, and my transportation, and my living expenses. Anything else, I'm done. There's just no way that can be done. That's almost a $350 hit on my income. So please, just, if possible, just leave things the way they are for the moment, or grandfather us in, who've been here for 20-plus years. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
I think there might be one or two other employees that put down multiple items on their cards. I'm not sure. Just ask and see if there's anybody else on the side.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Again, the issue is, when you do the comparison of Hesperia, Hesperia negotiated a unique agreement in which their PERS, instead of being 2.5, such as the city is, the Hesperia PERS, when they retire out, is at 2.7. So the employees agreed to pay the additional percentage on the PERS contribution, and in response to that, they were able to get something in return. And I think, again, from the city employee's perspective, we don't mind giving at the same time if we get something back. And going back to the original item, as an employee, if we, as the employees, are expected to be able to give and contribute towards that, it would increase disparity in the employees in the class in comp, given increases in salary compared to those that are being held firm, and then if we give a contribution into PERS, we're going to be reduced even lower. So please, keep that in consideration when you make the overall decision on what you're going to do tonight. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come up?
And Madam Mayor, just maybe this will provide some clarity to Mr. Cox's question. Effectively, assuming the implementation of the classification compensation portion of the study, if the city council were to also ask the employees or require the employees to pay the full 8 percent share, it would effectively be an 8 percent pay cut to the employees.
Thank you. That was my message, by not paying it, they effectively are getting 8 percent more. Goes both ways.
It does go both ways. That was part of the study, but it was called out separately only because it's an area that's tremendously in flux at this point in time because of that new law and the misinterpretations on the front end of its implementation.
Doug, you know, the nature of my original comments and the motion was to get us to discuss everything all at the same time, and we've gotten there, and yet we still haven't talked about the work week, and we haven't talked about COLA, let alone getting to city council stipends and benefits, which I think is a completely separate issue. You know, with respect to development and what we were looking to implement with residential development guidelines, this council implemented a focus group, which caused, you know, two council members, two planning commissioners, staff, various other interested parties to come together to try to figure out what it is that we ought to be doing, because based upon what I'm seeing here tonight, I don't know that this council can make a decision. I mean, we are all over the place, all over the map, even on the options that you've presented to us. And quite frankly, if we were to adopt the salary and position changes, what I want to know is how does that affect the other items? I mean, it doesn't, I don't know that there's any clear indication as to that. So, you know, from my perspective, perhaps we ought to look at this longer and try to figure out what can be brought back as a clear recommendation to this council, so it's not just, you know, five or six or 12 options. You know, we had some of the three options, Councilmember Kennedy introduced another option on something else previously. I mean, we are getting to the point where there is no clear direction or recommendation from staff to this council as to what makes sense for the city, and we're just being presented with, you know, choose one of these things, and I don't know that that's the best, the best way to, for this council to govern.
Councilman McCracken, if you're looking for a recommendation on this item, I'm happy to provide one, and I know that Councilmember Kennedy's not going to like it. But based on the way the classification study was done, I believe that this item was included in the study, and that if you ask the employees, or if you require the employees to pay the full 8 percent, whether that's starting July 1st, 2015, or over time, I believe that that is a reduction from what was studied, and would recommend that you implement an equal salary increase to those employees to make up for it. Otherwise, I think that it prejudices the study by taking monies away that were originally studied. I know it's not a popular thing with all of the council members, but that's my belief, is that this item was part of the study, and any reduction or any requirement for the employees to pick it up is getting outside of what was part of the study.
I didn't hear you.
Kick it down the road.
The comment that I made earlier about employees 2013 creates the following scenario. You have two employees, same classification, working side by side, making 8 percent difference. That's kind of a, if I were the new employee, I'd be a little bit upset that I'm doing the same work as another employee and they're getting 8 percent more, and I was hoping that we could find some way to be equitable, if we possibly can, based upon this way this is done. And I raised the question, what was it, a year ago when we first got the study from the consultant, because I had the questions of the consultant, but then was advised that as an individual councilman, I shouldn't get involved in that study, but that was one of the questions. If they reduced everything to an hourly rate, which ones were salary and which ones were benefits, because there is a lot of difference. And this is one of them right here, that if in fact, and I don't know that, that Hesperia is paying 8 percent, and they're getting 2.75 and 2.5, I've never seen any calculation that that was taken in effect. Also, because of the current cost, it wouldn't really, from the retirement point of view, no employee in this room is affected by it. The city council would have to change the contract with PERS, which they're not likely to do. So they wouldn't be affected. If all new employees are paying the full, whatever it is, 6, 7 percent, then eventually, if the current employees aren't affected, even though there may be some unhappiness in the workplace, all the current employees are protected, but you will reach a point where then all employees, because, you know, most of you will want to retire around 75 or so, and at that point, then we'll no longer be paying the employee's share, but the employees will be paying the share. I think we have to be realistic and look at that. I do not want to hurt the current employees. They didn't create that situation. It's a combination of state law, combination of the economy, which they have no control over, and I think a requirement that we be fair, because I do think that the current employees do need to be protected as much as we possibly can. We have limits with the finances also. So I do like the idea that the current employees are paying that amount. It eventually works out to where the employees will pay their share, but still, I want to get to the cost of living too, and the 36-hour work week, because I'm tired of being beaten up by the public that we only work, you know, three, four days a week, when everybody else has to work five and six. So that's another important item, which I think we have to discuss all of these before we can make a decision, and was another reason why I wanted the study session, so that we could discuss all these things before we came out and made a decision. So that's all I have to say on that.
I'd like to know why in the world council members get $150 cellphone allowance.
I think it's-
Whoever came up with that?
Make a motion that we deal away with it.
Do I get that?
I believe all of you do, yes.
Really?
I believe so.
How do I get it? On my paycheck?
They have to look at it individually, but it's part of your, part of the, it's in addition to the $950-some dollars that you get for putting up with all of us.
My business pays my cellphone. I do not need the City of Victorville to pay for my cellphone, so I'd like to see-
But the city is my business.
I think you skipped ahead.
I agree. I'd be willing to do away with it.
I don't want to sit up here and just make everybody in the room mad at me. I know I've accomplished that, and that's okay. I can live with that. I just think we have to deal with the world the way it is. We have to tell the truth. We can't just lie to ourselves and hope that somebody, somewhere, someday decides to deal with this. I just think that's wrong. I think we need to deal with it now. 8 percent is going to hurt. Let's do half of that. Let's figure out a solution. But we need to deal with these things, and I don't mind having an open discussion like this. I don't care if we don't make a decision tonight. I'm willing to hear anybody who's got thoughts on the subject. But I, you know, I live and work in the private sector, and I've been there all my life, and I looked at lots and lots and lots of pension plans. Most of them are 401K plans, because most defined benefit plans are gone. Most defined benefit plans that still exist have been frozen, because employers weren't willing to incur the costs that the city is incurring. And of the defined contribution plans that I know of, where employees participate, I have never seen one where the employer paid the employee's share. Not one. They don't exist. It's just, and I just, I think, you know, there's a huge number of people out there in our community who live in that world. I don't think it's too much to ask. I really don't.
Okay, so I don't think we have anything else.
We still have the 36-hour work week?
No, I mean, on D6.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
On D6. Shall we just leave it there, like we did D4 and continue on?
I think the agreement was to hear all these items, and then decide which, if we want to vote on all of them, or continue, or one each time.
Well, let's go through all of them, then, D7.
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, before you hear from any employees, let me attempt to explain the options here, and it may be different than what you'd like to see. Essentially, the question came up back in May, raised by an employee and also by council members, as to when we would be eliminating the furloughs, if ever, and so this item attempts to address that in a variety of ways. It's really kind of a two-part question, that being, would the council like to eliminate the furlough, and if so, what would you like to go to? That being a 980 that we used to have, where City Hall was closed every other Friday. There are some pros and cons to that. Another option being a 980, where we split the shift, we're open every Friday at that point. There are pros and cons to that. Possibly going to a 410, which a lot of other cities have done, typically closed on Friday. There are a lot of pros and cons to that as well, including keeping city offices open later into the evening, if you will, so that people who are working a regular day job can come in after work. But then you typically would not have, would not be open on Fridays. There was an option that was brought to me by an employee, that you could actually split that. You could ask us to work a 410 and actually split the shift, just like you would a 980, some of them having Monday off, some of them having Wednesday off, some of them having Friday off. I happen to have worked a 410 where I had Wednesdays off. I rather enjoyed it. And then the last one being a 58, which I hesitate to put on here as an option, because I think I'd get run out of town if you chose it, but it is an option that you can consider. I will tell you that this, I think universally, is unattractive to the employees. So the cost of eliminating the furlough altogether is about $2 million per year. Approximately $700,000 of that would come from the general fund, based on current payroll, and you just need to know that as we move forward. At this point, as Councilman McCracken has brought up, that's a budgetary item that I don't have that answer tonight, as to whether or not the general fund could find $700,000. I'd like to have that answer as quickly as we can, but I don't have it tonight, so I would not recommend you make a definitive decision tonight, but rather give us some direction on, you know, what are your desires that we can then bring back as part of either a later meeting, or possibly as part of the budget. Talking with a couple of you about this item, I've heard a couple of times that it's not so much about 36 or 40 hours, as it is about being open on Fridays, as a customer service issue. So another, in case there weren't enough options with four, I'll throw out a fifth one, which is that if we either don't want to get rid of the furloughs, or don't believe we can afford to get rid of the furloughs, it would be maintaining our current four-hour work week, but splitting that shift into one where employees work possibly Tuesday through Friday, and some work Monday through Thursday. So there's a variety of options.
Doug, is there a way that the, it can be structured so that we're open half a day on Fridays? A lot of businesses close noon Fridays.
That is an option.
Not on here.
Certainly, if that's a desire, it's not on here. That could be one way. Just off the top of my head, employees are currently working four nine-hour days. If the council wanted to be open half a day on Fridays, that's the four extra hours, you get a 40-hour work week. I can surmise from my conversations with employees that working five days is unattractive to them. They really like having that extra day off. Whether or not they would be happy with only a half a day off, I can't answer that, but I do know that the majority of the employees enjoy having the long weekends. It's one of the few benefits that they have, working here, as they've told me.
I have a question. The financial impact to the general fund of $706,000, now is that before any increases?
It is, yes.
Would be higher once the-
Yeah, it would. This is based on the current payroll, essentially.
Okay.
So it could potentially be just slightly higher than that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Clarify. If we work a 40-hour work week, all employees would get a 10 percent raise?
No, they would work 10 percent more hours, and their paycheck would go up 10 percent.
Well, okay.
There is a big difference there.
Well, that's true, but, you know, I-
Yeah, their paycheck would go up, and their time off would go down.
Yeah, the time off would go down. I understand.
It might feel like a raise on payday, but every other day of the week, not so much.
So Doug, what you were talking about with respect to certain employees working Tuesday through Friday, others working Monday through Thursday, would accomplish what Mayor Pro-Tim Cox and I have long heard from the public, that you're not open on Fridays. We would have some presence on Fridays and would not have any effect on the budget minus all the other items that we're discussing tonight, assuming all things are equal in what we currently have.
Yes, there is a way to do that, to essentially stay at 36 hours per week and open on Fridays. The pros of that, obviously, are that those employees who like that schedule would continue to have it. The city would be open five days a week, which is good. The con of that is that versus a split 980, and I'm not recommending either one at this point, but versus a split 980, where Fridays are typically lighter days, it's not that painful to have half the employees here on Friday. There are times that someone comes in and specifically needs to meet with, say, a planner or an engineer, and I joked with the employees when I discussed it with them, the people are going to come in on the exact day that they're not working, not realizing it. So, but it is an option to do that, exactly. The problem with that is that Friday's a light day, Monday through Thursday are not light days. So splitting the shift exactly 50-50 doesn't work very well, but if that's the option that the council wants to go with, in order to continue to save costs, at least for this fiscal year, I would recommend that rather than, you know, defining it as a 50-50 split, that essentially you ask me, as the city manager, to work with the department heads, to come up with schedules that meet those criteria, but don't impact the city and the customer service levels negatively Monday through Thursday, to the extent that that's possible.
All I would have ever expected from you.
I've been in the situation where half the crew is off on a Friday, and it seems like invariably, the person you need to see is not there, or they're not handling it, and you have to come back in Monday anyway. Unless, and I would hate to, I know all the individuals that require two and three-person crews, or they require a safety person, or they require, what happens when that person is gone? They have a total reassignment of individuals that they don't normally work with. I think a half, I think we either stay with the 36-hour work week, or we go, the way it is, or we go with the 40-hour work week, and everybody works the same hours. I just don't think it'll work. Even the Friday four hours, I mean, your day's shot. You might as well work as long as you're here. I don't, I can't see the four hours either. So from the public, and I realize, you know, we want the employees to be happy, they're the one that does the work, but, you know, if you really want to make them happy, Doug, let them work three days a week. But I'm getting beat up by the public on this thing. Every time I turn around, where I go in this community, people are coming down and upset because they want to do business on a Friday, and they've now kind of accepted that we're not here on Friday. We still have very light counter-business, except for Water Department, and probably not a justification to work on a Friday at this point, but it's coming. It's coming, and there's going to be building permits and activities and inspections, and, you know, we are going to have to face the reality that we also represent the public, and they're going to demand that we have businesses on Friday. I think we have to accept that. How we do it, I'm not sure, but I think we have to accept it. And right now, maybe not so much. I don't know if it's going to be in three months, or six months, or eight months, but we know it's coming, and we might as well plan for it.
Madam Mayor, have a comment? Again, going back to a consistent strategy, making the employees whole also means a five-day work week, in my opinion. I'm a federal employee, and when I became a government employee, I took a $10,000 pay cut from a private sector contractor. And on top of that, we had federal furloughs, so that was another $10,000. So a $20,000 pay cut in one year was very difficult, but I don't work out there to be enriched. It's about service, service to the army, service to the country, and it's the same thing we're all doing here. This is about service to the residents. So if you're going to be consistent about making this compensation package whole, I just don't understand why we don't get back to a five-day work week. Work it- Work it up through the budget workshops, make sure that we're good to go, and then phase it in if we have to. If we can't get there this year, maybe it's next year. But I don't understand, you can't have it both ways. It's a slippery slope when you start saying, "Okay, you've been giving me this benefit, and now it's not a benefit, it's an entitlement." All right? So, I'm a government employee, I'm very familiar with the culture of this, but this, I don't understand what we're talking about on this one either. Five-day work week is not some sort of penalty.
Anyone?
I think you may have some, I don't know if you have cards on this one too, or not, or public comment on it?
They're not indicated on the cards.
Are you representing everyone?
Well, no. This is, I was the one, I was the one individual...
Oh, okay, sorry.
They're going to stone me when we leave.
Thank you, Liz.
My car's going to be egged. I need the police, the police officer to escort me out, so I don't get shot by the rest of the employees. No, I was the one that brought up in the last meeting, about the idea of going back to a 40-hour work week. Now, one of the things that we haven't actually discussed, of all the options we've discussed, is some of the employees having the opportunity to work a 40-hour work week, and some employees having the opportunity to work a 36-hour work week. Right now, there are some departments that actually take a 30-minute lunch period, and they come in at 7:00, and they leave at 4:00. And they work, and they are compensated for a nine-hour workday. For the engineering department, the City Hall folks, we come in at 7:30, we take the two 15-minute breaks, we take the hour lunch, and then we leave at 5:30. With leaving the same schedule four days a week, City Hall being open from 7:30 to 5:30, the employees that wish to stay at 36 hours can stay exactly at the existing schedule, 36 hours. For those employees that desire to go to a 40-hour work week, we could be able to take the 30-minute lunch period only, and be able to be here at 7:30, leave at 5:30, not take the hour lunch, and be able to be made whole with that 40-hour work week, and the employees that want to stay at 36 can stay at 36. So, that is another option that's available, to allow those that wish to work 40-hour work weeks, because I can't get everything done in 36, to be able to work the extra four hours every week, and yet not change the entire schedule and try to figure out who's going to work where and when. So, again, that's another option to be considered. I am the guy that wants the 40-hour work week. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Liz, did you want to come up?
Oh, yeah.
I don't talk to the whole thing. I do talk for, is my crew. My crews consist of three-to-four-person crews. We can't get our job done just with one person. We need to work as a group. So, splitting us up will not work on some of them. It's going to be like, probably, customer service. The five or six people that are there now, two or three of them are going to go away, the people are still going to be mad, because now there's only two or three people helping them instead of five. When there's two crews working on asphalt, one working on concrete, it's not going to work either, because now I'm going to have to divide my crews up, and now just go to a one-person, or a one-crew. So, we need to think about this of, when your job consists of you, that doing your job, okay, but when it involves a crew, let's work as a crew. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, I, we've had some comments in alluding to the development community not being able to get an appointment with planning on a Friday. I've never had a complaint, and if there's anybody that would get a complaint from the development community, it would be me. I have had complaints on water churn-on and churn-offs, and customer service, and that's it. If you're not available on Friday, I hear about it. I'm sure Mayor Pro-Tim Cox has heard about it too, because he and I have had conversations on numerous occasions, whether it be regarding properties that he's involved in, or people that he knows in the community that have had this problem. It is definitely a water issue and a customer service issue. From my perspective, management ought to be able to manage that. I don't know that everybody needs to be on five days a week, or that the city needs to be open five days a week, but there ought to be an ability to get ahold of someone in customer service on a Friday, and get water churned on or churned off on a Friday. That's all I ever hear about, from a complaint standpoint.
And I got to tell you, I don't think this council is competent or qualified to make these kind of fine-tuned decisions. I just think that's crazy. We'll give you, we'll give you some payroll dollars, budgeted, and you figure out how to make it work. Anything else is a waste of everybody's time listening to us talk.
Well, and I think what I keep hearing is that the desire of the council, at least the majority of the councils, is to be open five days a week. And now I'm getting frowned, so, maybe not.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
For customer service, then.
Does that mean everybody, though?
No, it doesn't. That's what, the second part of that was that, that it's not so much about whether employees work Monday through Friday, Tuesday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, it's that you want the city services to be available Monday through Friday. I think, at the risk of going into this a little bit blind, rather than the council making a decision on whether it's going to be 36, 38, or 40 hours, if you simply give us that direction, that you'd like City Hall and city services, I should say, to be available five days a week, we can figure it out between now and the time the budget comes, as to what that looks like, as far as on a shift-by-shift basis, on a crew-by-crew basis, on a, you know, department-by-department basis.
Is there any service we provide that's more critical than turning on and turning off water? What else do we do?
No, there's not. My concern would be, if the doors are open to City Hall for someone to come in and turn on water, there will naturally be customers that want to go to planning, engineering, and other departments, and if those departments are on a 410, or on a 5, or are not open, I'll say, I think you open yourself up to other customer service complaints as a result of that. So, only having some of the departments open on Fridays, I don't think will work.
Let's move on to D eight, cost of living adjustment.
Okay, Mayor Pro-Tim Cox kind of alluded to this, that for, I don't know how long, a very long time, the city has used the March-to-March CPI to adjust for cost of living expenses. This effectively keeps employees up with inflation. And the way CPI indexes work, you really, once you've picked a certain month, in this case, it was March, I don't know when that was originally picked, it may have been 52 years ago, for all I know, you really have to stay with that. That number in, from March-to-March, is going to maintain that cost of living, where it is. If you were to go from March-to-March and suddenly go April-to-April, that April-to-April number is actually based on the last, I don't know, 30 or 40 years of CPIs for April, not for March. So, you don't want to jump around, that's why it's the March-to-March. Historically, the council, as part of the budget, has awarded that cost of living increase, based on that March-to-March. I think it's, kept the employees relatively compensated equally with surrounding agencies, kept them at their current pay, based on inflation. And unfortunately, as Mayor Pro-Tim Cox mentioned, back in '09, we had to make other adjustments, essentially, and we had several years of those. So, this isn't so much a, an item that I'm asking for a hard vote on, so much as just for the employees' benefit, because I was asked several times, are we finally getting back to COLAs? I'd like that answer to be, yes, we will assume a COLA implemented July 1st, as we always have, based on the March-to-March CPI.
I have a card. I'll call out Tessa Tate.
Thank you, Mayor, and Honorable Counsel for allowing me to speak. My name is Tessa Tate. I'm the Administrative Secretary for the Development Department, and I'm on my 15th year of employment with the city. My focus is for clarification regarding the COLA staff report being presented to you tonight. Since the other staff reports being presented to you are addressing schedule changes, vacation accruals, do go back in time referencing 2008. The COLA staff report fails to provide information going back to 2008, during the furloughs, when a COLA of 3.3% was given up. So, I feel it fitting that this honorable counsel have all the information. I'd like to summarize some of it for you, since Council McKecon was the only council member who served during that time. In 2008, the Consumer Price Index recommended a 3.3% COLA. We employees, as part of the furlough, gave up that 3.3%, along with a 6.7% pay cut. In 2009, the CPI recommended a 0% COLA, so it was fitting we didn't receive COLA that year. 2010, the CPI recommended a 1.9% COLA, which we did not receive. In 2010, the CPI recommended, oh, excuse me, in 2011, the CPI recommended a 3% COLA, which we received. In 2010, 2012, the CPI recommended a 2% COLA, which we also did not receive. 2013, CPI recommended 1.3% COLA, which we did not receive. 2014, the CPI recommended a 1% COLA, which we did receive. In all this, it totals 12.5% of COLA recommendations by the Consumer Price Index from 2008 to 2014, of which we received 4% since 2008. If our work week does get extended to a 40-hour schedule, and we receive the 6.7% pay cut, and the 3.3% COLA taken in 2008, as agreed by the council in 2008, as part of the furlough, then we are still shy 5.2% COLA since 2008. I realize that COLAs are not guaranteed. If we were to go back to my start year of 2000, I probably would find some other years we did not receive COLAs, as recommended by the CPI, or even before 2000, I suppose. I'm not implying that they should be expected, just that you should have all the information, beginning with the furlough year of 2008. Thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Anyone else that wants to come up?
I have a question of the city manager. Some, I know about the 3.3% that was not granted as a part of a overall package. I understood it as when they went from a 40 to 36-hour work week.
That's correct. That's what Ms. Tate was mentioning. The reason why we didn't include that is because it was effectively part of the furlough. In, I believe it was '07, there was an adjustment made, or maybe it was '08, to the number of hours, and I thought that the, trying to explain all of that would have added two or three paragraphs to the staff report. The net, as Ms. Tate pointed out, is a total of 5.2% in the end. So, I chose to leave that out. It wasn't trying to keep anything secret or hide it, it was just that I thought it added more confusion than clarity, to be honest. But she's absolutely correct. There was 3.3% COLA that was part of, essentially part of the furlough that was adopted.
But it was a part of the furlough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I had calculated is that we were behind 1.2, based upon the 3% and the, and the 1% that was granted, as opposed to 5.2 that should have been granted during those years. But I don't have the before, then, plus this year. And I don't know what it's going to be March-to-March, and I don't know if anyone has an idea.
I don't know either.
But, based upon the information that I had, and I'm not sure I have everything, and I realize the private sector doesn't give cost of livings, and it's been pretty traditional in government work, I felt that, to make it right with the employees, we owe the 1.2-plus March-to-March this year. And that's, that was what I was going to propose, but I don't think we're going to have an agreement, because we're going to put most of that off, but I'll still, unless I have other information, that, that will be my proposal at the time.
Actually, if that's a proposal or a motion, I'll second it, because I think it's time that we give that back to the employees.
But, well, we don't know what the, we don't know what the March-to-March, but I don't think it makes any difference. I think we ought to be, I think we ought to make a commitment to grant that, along with the 1.2. And then we'll get some information, we may need to make some further adjustments, but 1.2, it is all going to affect July 1, is what they've done in the past, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, it would be the 1.2, according to the data that I have, we will look at it again, plus March-to-March this year. I do make that motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro-Tim Cox, second by Councilmember McKecon. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Regarding the cost of living adjustment.
Now, we have item D nine, City Council Stipends and Benefits. Presentation of the comparison of City Council stipends and benefits for council, consideration, and possible action.
Mayor Garcia, just to clarify, and it doesn't matter to me which one you decide, but I wasn't sure that the request included D nine as part of the overall discussion. Certainly, you can talk about it now and include it, but I thought that the request was D four through eight be discussed before making any decision or direction on those items. Certainly, it's within the council's discretion to discuss D nine as well.
Madam Mayor, before you answer, I think, one of the, another reason that I wanted to have the exec, the staff workshop, I'm still not sure if department heads get any benefits that's greater than employee benefits, because I've always felt that all employees should get the same benefit. From the lowest paid to the highest paid, there shouldn't be any distinction on benefits. I've always felt that the city council should take the leadership role, and if there's going to be any cutting, you start with the city council first. Secondly, if department heads or senior employees, and I don't mean longevity, are getting more than the regular employees, I think that's the second thing that should be cut. The employees are out in the field, and they're doing all the work, or they're behind the counter, or they're listening to the irate individuals, and somebody, because they're in a supervisor or department head position, is getting greater benefits than they are, that doesn't go well with me, and it doesn't go well with the employees I've talked to. And that's why I wanted to include this one here. This is council, this is not the employees. But I, two things, I want the employees to know what we're getting, and we did compare with Adalado Apavada in Hesperia, or somebody did. And if we need to cut, then we need to do it here first.
Mayor Pro-Tim, to answer the question, the management employees, the contract employees, department heads, and above, all receive the exact same level of benefit as city employees do, any city employee does, as well as the council, with regard to the cafeteria plan. There are allowances for cell phones, and for car allowances, based on those individuals using their personal vehicle for city business. I don't consider that a benefit. I consider that essentially just an easier reimbursement than mileage. But if you want to consider it, then I guess that would be a little bit of a benefit that line staff don't get. But with regard to any of the other benefits, myself, Mr. Messler, any of the department heads, receive the same level of vacation benefits as the employees, based on years of service. It could be said that our per's benefit is higher, only because our salaries are higher, but we receive the same percentage as any employees do. So, from the city council, through management, through our lowest-paid employees, we all receive the same level of benefit. There was a time in, that was part of the first item discussed on class and comp, that management employees did receive, as a part of some kind of a study, a higher level of benefit with the 401A plan, and that was eliminated in 2009.
I know.
Any other questions?
Mr. Kennedy indicated that cellphone allowances, 150 a month, is that what department heads receive?
Not necessarily, no. I don't know what every department head receives. Cellphone allowances and auto, well, cellphone allowances are based on the need. I suspect most of the department heads are probably at that level. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I don't even know what I get, to be honest. But that amount was something that was discussed, oh, gosh, Tim, you were the city manager then, but that was discussed back in probably 2010, I suspect, and essentially decided that the city council members would receive that cellphone allowance. You guys don't have offices, you routinely use your cellphone, and that was the purpose of it.
And the computer, and the car.
Computer.
I, I'm trying to remember. I don't think I've ever turned in an expense account.
I haven't.
I don't?
I haven't.
Use your cellphone?
No, expense account, for mileage and so on.
No, I never have.
I haven't either.
I've traveled a lot of places for the city. I think if the city council sends a councilperson to represent the city, that they ought to be responsible for the expense incurred for that councilperson. But as far as the councilperson going to a meeting... But as far as the councilperson going to a meeting because they want to go, they ought to stand, they ought to pay their own expense. And we assuredly will only have one or two people to go. I suppose when I go to meetings and see all five councilpeople and seven department heads all at the same meeting, sitting in the same room, where the taxpayers are paying for that, as a taxpayer myself, I really object to that. We need a representative, sometimes we need staff people rather than councilpeople, sometimes we need a councilperson and a staff member, sometimes depending upon the meeting, we need more than one person. If we send those individuals, if they're designated to go, certainly the city should cover the cost. I go to a lot of meetings because I want to go. I don't turn in an expense account and don't intend to. If other individuals want to do it, that's up to them. I'm not going to argue that we should prohibit that. I'm just speaking for me. I use my own car, I use my own computer, I use my cellphone. I do get a cellphone allowance, I didn't realize it until I was told that I get it. It's 150 a month, I'll be willing to make a motion to reduce that to 100, and no other reimbursable expenses unless you're sent by the city. Because I don't turn it in, doesn't mean that everybody should do it, and I'm not even recommending it. I'm just speaking for me. Adopt it, I still won't take it.
Mayor Garcia, have a comment on this? This goes back to what I've been saying about being consistent. You have best practices in the private sector and in the government as well. Other cities get car allowances, 400 for Hesperia, 550 for Apple Valley, we don't get any. I do need a cellphone reimbursement. I have a seven-year-old car. If I'm going to a meeting in Ridgecrest or Palm Springs, best practices, and in my last job, a couple of jobs ago, I had a $400 car allowance, and I was expected to be out and about, representing my organization. So, if you look at us up here, just like many of you, we are not all in the same situation. You have people that have been self-employed, people that are retired, and people who are still working. And so, I don't suggest for one minute to have one strategy that's going to make everyone happy. But if you at least understand the reasoning why, and what the strategy is, I think it's easier for people to understand. So, when I hear other people saying they don't need something, that's fine. But, there are, there's more to this than just hand waving, and this is what we're going to do today, and that's the plan, or, or what? We get a, we get a benefit? I don't need that. Well, that, that to me, is offensive. Because what I've asked city staff to do was make sure that we have a consistent compensation strategy, because this stuff is all askew. And instead of actually addressing the overall priorities here for this city, we get deep down into the details, and so, much like you guys coming here today, I don't know if you expected to lose or backtrack from where you already were, but if you're going to be looking to be made whole, you know, we are supposed to be the key city of the high desert. And so, I'm confused. Are we, or are we not? And if we are, let's act like it, and be consistent.
I think the best policy on automobiles is if you drive at city business, you track your miles, you submit a request for reimbursement. You get reimbursed at the standard rate. What is it now, IRS rate, 56.5 cents? I've never believed in car allowances, I don't think they're a good idea. They go on your W-2 as compensation, then you have to justify your expenses. Car allowances are, it makes sense for a city manager who's just constantly on the move, and how's he going to track his miles? But for us, I don't, I don't think a car allowance is appropriate at all. If we have city business, we can submit a claim for reimbursement. Works fine.
Well, I don't report it, and I don't return, I don't turn in my car expense, so I think I'm safe there. Just have to.
Yeah, and 90% of the miles I put on my car are city-related, just due to my involvement on behalf of the city council and at Sandbags. So, you know, I think we're across the gamut here. Obviously, there are some of us on the council that serve in roles that require us to do a lot more than others, and, you know, I don't know how you really take that into consideration, other than what Councilmember Kennedy suggested, and that is churning in mileage. I have not done that for reimbursement. I've just assumed, because based upon, when I came on the council in 2008, everything went off a cliff. And so, I was told by the city manager that we brought in at that time, that, you know, you just suck it up and you pay your own way. That included going to California League of Cities, I paid my own way. That included going to Southern California Association Governments, that included me paying my own way. I mean, I literally had to pay my own way to every single thing that councilmembers were expected to be at. Meanwhile, my counterparts in Apple Valley and Hesperia were not only getting their own way paid, and I'm not trying to throw any of them under the bus, they obviously had different budgets and things going on, but, but as Mayor Protem Cox alluded to, I mean, in most cases, if we were there, if one or two of us were there, that was a big deal, we would see entire councils from other communities, along with numerous staff members attending these things. So, you know, this council, those of us that have been here for a while, have made tremendous sacrifices, based upon what I see going on in other cities, but I don't mind it, I'll continue to do it.
Question to the city manager, doesn't the city have a policy to be reimbursed for city-related expenses?
Yes, we do. So, it's at the standard rate, I don't know the exact number. We've got a policy regarding the amount that can be reimbursed for hotel, for meals, and then we pay the, whatever the current IRS rate, I think Councilmember Kennedy mentions, 56.5, I think it's right around there.
Yeah, and just to be clear, that has occurred in the last two years, just prior to that, it wasn't occurring at all.
Correct.
Well, basically, all we need to do is just have an understanding that we will follow the policy, and that bad city manager that canceled all of that, gone now.
Gone, but not forgotten.
Yeah, I think. But there was a reason to cancel all of that, there really was, trying to save money, and I felt it required the city council to do that, to show the employees that they're trying to save also. But we do have the policy, I don't see anything wrong with the policy, unless there's something wrong with the policy. So any councilperson that incurs expense in city-related businesses that goes to meetings is free to follow the policy and be reimbursed for out-of-pocket expenses, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And I would agree. I think that that gets to what Councilmember Negrete was saying. We, it should be consistent across the board.
I agree with that.
You know, whether or not you choose to do it is your own option.
That's different.
But, if you choose to do it, it ought to follow the policy and ought to be implemented in that way. No one of us should get a benefit over the other, based upon that policy.
I agree, 100%.
And I think that's why everyone gets a 150 cellphone allowance. I think one individual councilmember asked for it, and I think that city manager who's gone but not forgotten decided that everyone, every one of you should have the same amount. And I understand it as staff now, you know, this is, there's a reason why this item doesn't have a recommendation, because I wouldn't dare touch it. This is really your item to discuss. It was an informational item that Councilmember Negrete asked for, simply for discussion, for all the reasons that he stated, and I think it's a healthy discussion to have.
D2. The end of discussion.
Okay, so.
Not sure there's need for action on this item, unless somebody would like to make a motion, but then the question is, what is the course of action with respect to items?
Four through D8.
Four through eight, if anything.
Through seven.
Oh, through seven?
Right, through seven, that's correct. Action was taken on eight.
I'd like to talk this, toss this out on D4. I don't think it's a good study, I don't know that it's a bad study, it's imperfect, we spent a lot of money on it. Unless we intend to redo it and go out and start from scratch, I don't think we'll ever get all your answers, Jim, that you've been looking for. I don't, I'd be inclined to say, let's accept it as it is, and be done with that part, and move on to the other issues, which I think really require a lot more thought and discussion. So, I would make a motion to approve.
But we didn't decide whether to go the 40-hour week, or?
No, 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 only D4.
Or, just D4?
Only D4, the class and compensation study. We know it's going to cost us about $275,000.
Yes, across all the agencies of the city.
Across all agencies, in the year of adoption.
Yes.
When would it take effect?
It would take effect July 1, is the recommendation. That way, we can fit it into the budget, we can actually budget, hopefully with only one budget, on a go-forward basis.
Well, I'll make a motion, if anyone wants to salute it, we will.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember McEckernan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries unanimously to approve. Number D4.
And if I could make a comment somewhat in jest.
I don't take that to mean I'm backing anybody's good graces, right? Didn't know what that is.
At least for, at least for a few seconds, until we get to the next item. Let me assure you that as long as I'm the city manager, you won't have another classification and compensation study. It comes forward again. However, as I said to the employees two weeks ago, you know, if they believe that even after the study, or if something happened during the study that changed, that they are working out of classification, the same thing always applies. Please go to their supervisor, to their manager, to their department head, or whomever. It doesn't mean that there's necessarily a pay raise, but if you're working out of classification, you need to let somebody know, and we can deal with it in an appropriate manner.
Okay, now we move on to public comments.
Is there any action with D5, 6, or 7, or is the issue just to defer it to another meeting?
Actually, no, I would very much like direction on those items, at least some idea for what you'd like us to put together, either individually or as a package. No, I think we need more discussion, and at least direction, if not a final decision on each of them.
I agree, we need more discussion. I like a study session on those.
A study session would be appropriate.
I think so. I think we can sit here tonight and try to define our direction, aren't we?
That's up to you. If you'd like, we had planned on talking about those items next Tuesday. If you want to give us some, I don't know about direction, but if you can let us know what more you'd like to know as far as the study work on that, we'd be happy to put it together. Don't know that we'll have it to you by Thursday afternoon, as we tend to do, but we can certainly have information ready for next Tuesday, if you give us some idea what additional study you'd like.
That means we're on for next Tuesday?
That's up to you. What I'm looking for is, is direction on these items, so that as we start to prepare the budget, and we're going to be doing that within a matter of weeks, we know some final direction on it.
That assumes that we know what direction to send you in, Doug, and I'm just not sure we do.
I'm not sure either.
Have you got some sense of?
How's the budget looking? What, sorry, Sam, but I'm looking at you in the back of the room, I'm looking at our fire chief. I mean, what kind of, you know, renewals on those contracts are we going to see? It's so difficult for this council to sit up here and make these kind of decisions when we don't know all the rest of what's going to occur come July 1. So what you're asking us to do is make these decisions, and then you're going to come back and say, oh, by the way, I got a 12% increase from the Sheriff's Department, and 15% increase from, you know, the Fire Department. I don't want, I don't want to be faced with that decision after I make a decision here. I think we all have to have that as a part of the overall decision-making process.
Okay. How about this, on D5, whatever decision you make impacts long-term finances, without question, but it doesn't impact next year's budget. So, D5 is an item that is really not going to affect the budget one way or another, so some decision or direction on that would be helpful. On D6 and 7, we can actually include those as part, I feel like I'm missing one. Okay, on D6 and 7, we can actually include those as we get closer to the budget, as items to be discussed at that point in time, because both of those would have material impacts on the budget, positive or negative.
Doug, on D5, I don't think there's anybody up here, not to mention nobody in the audience who buys my approach. I think what we need to know is, I don't want to know names, I don't, but, and I don't know positions or any of that. I'd like to know who's got what, how big is this issue, how critically, now, it's all important, it's critically important, but, but, I mean, are we talking about three people? Are we talking about 23 people? Are we talking about 123? I don't know.
I mean, as far as who's getting how much?
Yeah, who's getting?
You're not asking for the leave balances. The leave balances is not what you're talking about. You're talking about who's getting, looking at these real quickly here, who's getting 247 hours? Who's, how many, how many employees are getting 247?
Different loads.
How many are getting 207? How many are getting 167?
But what's the real effect of what the city?
Yeah, we can put that together relatively quickly. I don't know that we need a separate workshop for that. That's an item that we can bring back at the next regularly scheduled meeting. On 6 and 7, you know, I'm not opposed to bringing that back at budget time with some hard costs associated with them, if that's the desire of the council.
I think on D5, from my perspective, what I'd like to see is, you know, some sort of hybrid of the options you've indicated, I guess four, or five, or two, you know, just trying to understand exactly what all those might entail, but the idea that whatever current employees have, they don't lose, but an ability to implement some sort of new policy going forward, that, from my perspective, that's, I think, what the council has talked about over time, and as we've looked at this issue. Something in that range. I understand that there might be some hybrid of that, I'm not sure that I've eloquently put it, but at the end of the day, I think it gets to a best practice, it gets us somewhere between what, it being overdone in the government sector, being what the norm is in the private sector, somewhere in between, without going all the way to what Councilmember Kennedy suggested, and that's just four weeks, period. That's all we get in our, in the business world, but I understand that's not the norm here. So, just trying to figure out, how do we get in between there?
To be respectful of the employees that did speak, perhaps we can also bring back, when we bring back, you know, how many employees at each level, we can bring back a more focused study on really just the Victor Valley plus Barstow, because that's the people that they interact with on a daily basis, that's who they compare to on a daily basis, and maybe including all of the agencies that were studied for this item, which really isn't included in that total compensation package, is something that we need to narrow our focus, just to really the Victor Valley and High Desert City.
I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Just because I'm curious.
Okay.
Okay, so then we agree that we will have a study session, or we're just giving you direction?
Well, I think, to be honest, I don't know how productive a study session is going to be before the budget on items related to the employee contributions, the 8% and the work week, because I agree, it would be very difficult, and we weren't expecting it tonight, for you to make a decision that has a $700,000 impact to the general fund this early in the process. So, I think rather than dragging everyone here next Tuesday, what we can do is put together that information for the first meeting in March, on the vacation options, you know, trying to take in everything that was set up here tonight, I think I get the, at least a sense for which direction you're headed with that. So we'll put that information together, as well as a recommendation based on what I've heard tonight. And then on the employee contributions and the work week options, unfortunately, and fortunately, I think we need to hold off until we get into some budget discussions on those, on those things. And hopefully, it won't cause us to have three different budgets, but we'll have to wait and see. If we have to do three budgets, then we'll do three budgets again. We're here to implement the decisions of the council.
Okay. So then, do we move on then to public comments? Public comment?
If you'd like, I can recap just real quick here. Item D4 was approved, item D8 was appro- Item D four was approved, item D eight was approved, plus adding in a 1.2 cost of living increase at the same time as the COLA increased effective March to March. And then on D five, we'll bring that back, first meeting in March with additional information. On D six and seven, we'll bring that back as part of, hopefully, early budget discussion when we have some, some totals.
Okay. Want to?
Public comment?
Public comments? Okay, now we move on to public comments and, what else I have? Oh, I have cards. Okay, I have some cards here and, let me see if they're all pertaining to the same item. Yes, they are. Okay, Bernie from?
Good morning, Mayor. All you members of the council, thank you for hearing me tonight. I thought I dealt with this last week at the Planning Commission, but I guess not. I represent the Tumbleweed Group. We are a AA umbrella group. We have a storefront on Seventh Avenue near Union, and in April, code enforcement dropped by and told us we were in violation. So I purchased a business license, which we haven't received at this point, but apparently we are still in violation. I went to the Planning Commission and explained that we are, being an umbrella group, we have 29 meetings a meet, in our, meeting a week in our storefront. Apparently, we aren't zoned for public gathering. I'm not sure what the, the problem is here, but the Planning Commission said they would contact me by the end of the month, and instead I heard from Mr. Medina again, wanting to know where to mail a citation to. We don't want to be in violation. We are trying to be good citizens here, but I, I do believe we support public service by having so many meetings in the heart of Old Town, and we do sign card, you know, cards for the, attendance cards for the local judges and for recovery groups. So I, I went to the Planning Commission, I hoped to hear from them, I didn't, and now I'm hearing from code enforcement again, so I'm coming directly to you folks. I don't know what you can do about this, but I really, we don't want to be in violation. We just want to have our meetings.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Norman Miller?
Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller, and I'd like to take a little leeway here, because I wanted to talk on D two, and I know that has been passed, but I still have a couple of comments on that. And one of those is I also was on a water district a few years ago. I remember we passed to have electronic radio transmitters on the water meters, because that would save money and time. And I know this has already been passed, but I still want to make this comment. Since then, I've seen a couple, three times where this item has come up again, has been voted on, so I don't know if these transmitters only last so long, you have to renew them or what. But anyway, bottom line here is, on the way, or, I'm sorry, a friend of ours called in to the city that they had a water meter leak, and the water district came out and checked the meter, and it was on the city side, not on the residential side. It took them two weeks to get the meter fixed to stop the leak. Today, on our way home, driving up the street, I noticed there was a water truck walking, driving up the road, stopping at each meter, checking the water meter. That guy could have been fixing the water meter instead of checking the readings on the meters. That's all I wanted to say on that. The other thing is, I have a question about the, you could get an answer sometime, on the lighting tax that we passed, streetlights. I'm curious how many new streetlights have been put into the city of Victorville, and I'm curious how many new streetlights have been put into the Golden Triangle. And all from that, I'd also like to know, I understand that there's some road improvements going on into the city of Victorville. I haven't seen any road improvements for the Golden Triangle, especially Bear Valley Road, which is one of the worst roads I've seen in years. I mean, it, it almost shakes your car apart. It's, anybody coming into Victorville that wants to go to the west has to agree that Victorville is still an old town, they have not come up to snuff. Even on the east side, they can't get the road right. Bear Valley Road needs to be improved all the way along. The other thing is.
Thirty seconds?
I'd like to take advantage of this, because I did not get to talk on D two. The other thing is on the internet meetings, that these meetings are supposed to be on the internet. We wanted this transparency years ago, and it came around, and I was able to watch the meetings on internet. In the last two or three years, I have not been able to, because it's been buffered all along. Get about five or six words from anybody in here, and it goes to a buffer.
Three minutes are up.
And I've talked to the city, I'll talk louder if I have to. I've talked to the city many times about this problem, and they come back and say there's nothing wrong. But even city employees have called in and said they cannot get these meetings on the internet at the time of the meetings, and I sure wish somebody'd check on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gene Allrich?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Gene Allrich. To give you a kind of a, something that happened to me here, my wife and I, we went to a long trip. We went through 23 different states, and we really enjoyed it. It was really beautiful, and a lot of cities and states made a good first impression upon us. I get back to the desert, and I notice that there is not a good impression here, and we want to bring this up in our city. You wanted to bring it up to a quality life and more facilities and everything. One of the things that I see is the issue of illegal dumping and trash, okay? I know that the code enforcement is doing everything they possibly can. We have new code enforcements, it's really attacking it, attacking the desert area, going to pick up some of that areas, clean it all up, okay? However, it is becoming an ongoing problem, and it will continue to be an ongoing problem, unless we come up with a solution. To give you an example, in the last three weeks, I've had, in my area, seven different dumpings, okay? I brought some pictures, you can take a look at some of the areas that I have. One of the ones that was, last week, was dumped over on Dos Palmas. It was all nice and bagged up, but by the time the recyclers got through with it, and in a couple of days, it was spread over about 70 feet, okay? And so all that paper with the wind just blows everywhere. It makes a really a lousy impression upon our city, and I really think that this is a fine city to live in, and I enjoy living here. However, there's some issue that needs to be addressed. I've come up, I don't come up with just complaint, I have some solutions that I'm hoping that you would at least listen to. Number one, to start putting dumpsters in the problem areas and allowing the people to just dump them there. Some of the cities back east, that's what they do, they bring them up, you can dump your areas, you can dump your trash, or whatever you don't want, there, okay? Put signs in English and in Spanish all over, directing the people where they can dump. They're not just dumping it everywhere, they're only dumping it in one area, in a dumpster, okay? And dumpsters at the recycling areas, Seventh Street, Palmdale, Stoddard Wells, adding dumpsters to there to allow people to, to dump there. The recycling area also could include a dumpster from the concrete company over there.
Thirty seconds?
Maybe they might want to add a dumpster there, plus also the carpet and pads can be dumped too. There are companies that recycle that. Require electronic recyclers to have dumpsters for waste, because a lot of the recyclers for, for electronics, they throw their waste out just into the desert. In conclusion, I have talked to George Duran about this problem, I've talked to different people here on the city council, and there have been some problems with commercial people dropping places, you know, dropping there, and he has the solutions that I gave to them, and he's able to address that issue and mitigate any problems there might be. Thank you for listening for me, and I'm hoping we want to make this a beautiful city, something we can be proud of. First impression counts.
Thank you very much. Dorothy Miller?
Hello, Mayor, council members, here I'm back. I have several problems. We were brought into the city in 1992, and there's been a lot of changes not been followed through with the Golden Triangle. And matter of fact, I'd like to set an appointment up with the mayor, see a few things that we have out there. We just keep going on and on and on. Then the newspaper comes out and says, oh, we're not doing Bear Valley Road from the freeway to 395. Well, I don't care if they don't do it all the way to 395, but at least between Armegosa and Mariposa, it needs to be done. And I mean, I bounce through that all the time, and it's tearing the heck out of people's cars, and it's just not right. We're doing all these other streets, and I guarantee you downtown, off of Green Tree, where all these ex-mayors and everybody lives, their roads are beautiful down there, but we don't get them. Now, this is not right. It really is not right what's going on, and the people in the Golden Triangle are really not happy with what's going on out there. And somebody's got to do something. Like I say, I want to set an appointment up with the mayor, and I want to take her for a little trip and let her see some of the stuff that is out there. But they took us into the city, they're going to take care of us, they promised us all these things. I have trash trucks that go up and down my road every day. Well, you know what? They don't grade our road anymore. They don't grade the road, the trash people come, I have to keep the road up. Now, do you think that's right? We didn't used to. This has only just happened recently, and it's out of control, and somebody better take steps to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards. Did anybody else want to come up and speak? If not, then, our city manager, do you have?
I just have a few comments. First, I want to thank the council for your attention tonight, your, you know, difficult wrangling with some of these items. It can be difficult to talk about them. Couple of things to mention regarding some of the public speakers. Bear Valley Road, the reason why, as the council knows, at the last meeting, the reason why that wasn't an option considered was because it's already out to bid at this point. Bear Valley Road from the Wash to Pacoima, the worst section of that road, is going to be repaved within a matter of months at this point, so something that was already approved by the council quite a while ago, and we were waiting on weather. We have the weather, so it's currently out to bid, and that is already in the works. On the east side, as the council knows, that was your number one priority, to get repaired. So that one should be, I don't want to say months, because I don't want to put too much pressure on engineering, but I suspect within a year, that will be repaved mostly in concrete as well. All of this information can actually be viewed in the State of the City address, which was uploaded to the city's website. If you just go to the city's website, if you weren't able to, or weren't a member of the Chamber of Commerce, you can watch the address. I would encourage anybody who, who lives in the city to go ahead and watch it. It's got a lot of good information about some of the positive things that we're doing in and around the city. And then lastly, with regard to beautification, I know you submitted a card, sir. I'd love to meet with you to talk about that further, along with our development and code enforcement staff, and we may, we may put you to work a little bit.
Thank you. City council reports. Anyone?
Just real quick, anybody that's interested, on Friday, we are going to have the ribbon cutting for the Ranchero interchange in Asperia. I'll be representing not only the city, but also Sandbag at that, at that function on Friday. It's at 11:30, and then immediately thereafter, the interchange will be open to the public.
What, what was the date?
This Friday, February 20th.
Very good. Anyone else?
And I hope that everyone else does, but there are people who do not follow the rules, and it makes it problematic. So what I did like about what you were saying is, you also have recommendations, okay? Now, I can, we can't do it up here, because we're not the ones that are littering and throwing TVs out in the desert, or, and/or we probably cannot catch everyone who's doing that. So we understand that we have some struggles here, but I think there's a narrative of complaining that's been going on in the city for decades. And what was refreshing about today, after all of this, was that you were willing to help participate in the solutions, which is why I got involved, which is why I wanted to be here. So in the, in the future, I just hope that, you know, we hear a lot of narrative about, you're not doing this, you're not doing that. Well, if it comes to crime, we're also not committing the crimes, we can't tell you where they're going to be. We got some issues here, and we can work on them together, but you name it, homeless, littering, jobs, employment, you know, getting engaged in your community is probably one of the best ways to help start turning the tide. Because I'll be honest with you, over a lot of years, people probably had opinion of Victorville, and I know it's changed for the, for the better, and I like living here. The house I have here is the best house I ever had, and I lived in Orange County and LA and everywhere. But anyway, like I said, I think I'm going to be working on changing the narrative of, I understand complaints, but they're really useless unless we have some recommendations and work together as a community, as a city, stakeholders in our community. The cleanup days, I've had all kinds of people complaining about everything, and we are getting there, especially on the roads. We had some really good news in our last council meeting that said we were able to tackle four projects coming up, which we weren't planning on for another couple of years. So there is positive change, and I appreciate you coming here tonight. And then also, just going forward, just to make the most use of our time, be as effective as possible as decision-makers, we need to know a lot of times, a second and third order affects what's going to, what a decision might make. And if, if it's not ready yet, I would much rather prefer like the work week conversation. Obviously, working with the budget workshop and all that would be a lot more fruitful than what happened here today. So again, I just want to remind everyone, please do not assume that city employees or people that work for the city or the city council are not trying to get to where we need to be. There are quality people doing a great job here, and, and we're going to get there, it's just going to take time. I genuinely feel things are getting better, and so, like I said, we'll, we'll work on this together.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I don't believe that we have any more business before our council, so I will adjourn this meeting.